Good evening, everyone. We're very delighted to be joined by a special group of young people tonight who presented on our library this summer at a summer camp which we're going to be given a little more information in a moment in terms of the program. And hopefully everybody in the audience and listening or watching on TV will enjoy the presentation and then we'll commence our normal board meeting. That'll turn it over to you, Sonia.
Thank you, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Welcome. Good night. I would like to just give you a little bit of background information. This summer, It Takes a Village to Educate a Child, which is a nonprofit organization that I have. We, our focus is on helping lifting the self-esteem of children, all children, but particularly children who, you know, have some challenges. We had a camp and we use STEAM, science, technology, engineering, art, and math as an opportunity to help children excel socially, emotionally, and we focused on entrepreneurship. So, part of the challenge that the children were faced with was creating a business proposal for the YMCA and the New Rochelle Public Library to improve their business. And so, we just wanted to let them run with it. Some people said, "This is too challenging for young children." I said, "No, if they play video games and they can figure out how to get from level one to level 10, they can do this." And they did it. And thankfully, Ms. Chris Sillent came in. She got off the plane and she was part of our panel of judges on our board and she did an amazing job at being one of the judges. And she was so impressed with the presentation that she invited them in here tonight to present their presentation. And they actually won the Entrepreneurship Award, which we presented at the Heinz Entrepreneurship Center at Iona College. So, I'm really proud of their accomplishments. So, thank you for applauding them. And you guys are going to do an amazing job. And my dear Lindsay, I am going to hand it over to you because you guys are the stars and I'm going to shut up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We are the bands. Let's band people together. Rochelle Public Library. Mission statement: The New Rochelle Public Library seeks to improve the life of citizens in Rochelle. New Rochelle Public Library's goals are to supply an educational and enjoyable environment where kids can get access to books, videos, and information. Target market: The library is geared towards meeting the requirements of all customers rather than making money off of them. The ages are from 2 to 90, and it's for both male and female. Then, we have the New Rochelle Public Library's service and product, which is to give people a place to come and learn where they can gain information, their books, or websites. The New Rochelle Public Library's, I mean, the New Rochelle Public Library's problems is that when kids come, they hardly ever read. They go on the computers and play on the games to entertain themselves. We can solve this problem by getting the New Rochelle Public Library to the 21st century so that kids will be inspired to learn and will actually enjoy learning. So, we're going to use STEAM to bring the library to the 21st century. So, S for science. Science will be added into the library by adding science labs. We can have programs where kids, they read books about science, certain experiments, or anything about science, and then at the end of the week, they will perform the experiment that they learned in the book. Then, we have T for technology. We'll use FaceTime to have international book club meetings where kids can collaborate together on a single book or story. Then, we can have interactive iPad games in the children's section where kids can use iPads, both young and old, to expand their minds. And finally, we have virtual reality to go deeper into books being read by the kids. And Rochelle will tell you more about that.
Me. No, it's me. Olivia.
Just move on to, listen, Imad, why don't you just continue on and then go to even more to explain some. It's okay.
Then, we have engineering and art for E&amp;A. We will create specifically themed rooms. For example, we can have a soccer room. And Ethan will tell you more about our soccer-themed room. There could be soccer decorations, soccer that you can read about books, and there can be virtual reality that you, that you can maintain of, of virtual reality, soccer game that you've been playing in.
Excellent. Excellent.
All right. Finally, in STEAM, we have M for math. We can have programs where kids can create their own math games. They can either come up with it themselves, or they can learn from previously created games. And finally, why should you choose bands? Well, the owners of bands started their company by designing 21st century projects and we wanted to help other companies prosper in the same way that we did. And the mayor of Rochelle is one of our clients.
Thank you. And really, that's the presentation. Great job. Bow. Are there any questions? Yes, absolutely. So, we're going to open up the floor to the questions. The age group of the children range from, we're ranging from nine to, no, here. It's about nine to 12.
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12.
Wait, no. I'm 12.
Which of them, Imad, are you the, were you the Imad? Or anyone, which of the projects that you proposed do you think would be the easiest to implement?
Well, our main projects were really any. Our main projects were in the STEAM and each letter had its own project, but we don't really have one that was like more important than the other one. We didn't like go more into depth with one than we did the other. But they were, these were just all ideas and things that we thought could be really interesting for our company.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Ethan.
I thank you, my esteemed entrepreneurs. You did an amazing job. Thank you. And thank you for having me.
Thank you. I wanted to, I wanted to express the thanks of the board. That was really awesome. I think we have some real actionable ideas. I think the FaceTime Book Club, you know, international book club idea is, to me, a really cool, compelling idea and something that we could do pretty easily. So, thank you for taking your time to really think about our library and think about ways that we can improve it. We really appreciate it. And it's, you know, you guys are young. We hope to see one of you up here one day, you know, stewarding the library on the board. And I have no doubt based on this that you all have a lot of contributions to make. So, thank you so much. You're welcome back at our meeting anytime. We have, we have a section of our meeting any day, every meeting where a citizen of New Rochelle, or anybody for that matter, can speak to the board and express their mind and give thoughts and ideas. So, we very much welcome you back anytime and obviously, we look forward to seeing you at the library again soon. So, thank you and thank you, Sonia, and thank you, Chris, for bringing the group to us.
And thank you all for watching.
I dare say that may be the highlight of our meeting.
Yeah.
That was pretty cool. So, the group has agreed to share with the board, the group has agreed to leave with us temporarily their posters and also this model. So, I would like to ask the director to see if we can find a place to sort of display this in, you know, in our first floor somewhere.
Of course.
And then, you know, bring it back to them. So, thank you.
I'd like to thank you for getting the skirt.
Oh, you're welcome.
Oh, wow. Nice. Moving on. Trying to professionalize for TV. It's even purple. Well done.
To be Rochelle's colors.
Well done. So, I guess first item on the agenda is public discussion unless, did you want to, want to hear about public discussion?
We do, right? We sometimes go at the end and we talk.
Yeah. Yeah, what don't, if folks don't mind, we'll kind of go through the agenda and then you...
It allows you to hear what we mean about...
Okay, perfect. First item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Does anybody, I will give people just a minute. I know they got circulated.
Apologies.
No, no, sorry.
My, on July, on the July minutes, my name is spelled wrong. It's Deirdre Gray Clark. Don't tell my husband that you guys put Deirdre Clark Gray.
Before he slips.
But only that one. Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we accept the July minutes from the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Daniel.
So, do we want to do August? I mean, yeah. Anybody have anything on August?
I'll make a motion to approve the August minutes. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Daniel.
Daniel. So, the minutes for July and August are approved as submitted with the exception of the one change in Dieter's name on the July minutes.
As amended.
As amended. Next item on the agenda, I don't think we have any financial reports because Jean is out. Anything statistics related you want to mention, Tom? Or maybe on the financials, let me know today that the audit's going well. The annual audit that the school district conducts is going fine. So, no issues to report.
Thank you, Chuck. No, the news is good in terms of our finances vis-à-vis the auditor. In terms of statistics, I do have a document that was given to me by Barbara Davis in regards to summer activities. I'm not certain if Daniel has had a chance to see that document and you might want to report about activities as part of your community relations report. If you don't have that document, Daniel, I have a copy I can share with you.
Please, thank you.
So, with that, I will defer to Daniel when he reports for his committee.
Okay. I don't think, do we have any sort of WLS report tonight since Dr. Gray is out?
Dr. Gray is indeed out. She did mention at the August meeting, the executive director of the Westchester Library System, Terry Kirshner, his report as of May 2018 in which the digital inclusion issue was brought up. She asked me to have copies made for the board. They're in the packet. And that's probably the most significant report, other than the fact that WLS is moving forward towards a new integrated library system. There will be decision made in the very near future. We currently use the vendor Cersei for our product and it's, the finalists is, finalists are Cersei and another vendor called Evergreen. We all know Cersei, Evergreen is a product that is being used all over, not just the country, but the world, and it's called open source in which the software can be molded to meet the needs of the library or the library system. So, I'll share more about a decision in the near future.
Great. Next item, the director's report.
Fairly brief report. Just want to bring you folks up to date in regards to our grant situation. As you know, we were fortunate enough to receive a $276,000 grant. We applied last August. We received the money this August. This grant will be used towards the renovation of our circulation area, new desk, security system, gate, areas for patron pickup holds, et cetera. So, that check has arrived. The foundation, through a very successful fundraising effort, will be able to meet our match, which is $92,000 in total. And so, we are moving forward with the renovation of this, of this circulation gateway area. We are targeting December of this year to begin the process. We have meetings with various vendors scheduled next week and the weeks following. So, hopefully, we'll be able to quote-unquote "break ground" at that point in time. Relative to the grants that we made in last month for, for the main library and the Huguenot Children's Library, there was a grant for $8,300 for our Huguenot Children's Library furnace. Unofficially, we've received that, we've received approval. We have to wait for final decision by the Westchester Library System Board. That will come in early October. So, that's good news. We'll be able to replace the furnace boiler, which is 25 years old and most definitely starting to fail. The other grant that we applied for was a far larger grant in terms of scope and, and financial cost, and that is for the renovation of the second floor space. And that grant was, the total cost of the project was $557,670. The good news is unofficially, we've received word that we will likely get a grant amount. It will be less than that because of the very stiff competition. There were 22 libraries that applied for grants this go-round. We are hoping that we'll receive a grant for $140,000, which is less than what we wanted, but yet will allow us to continue our efforts to renovate, update, improve our library. The particulars are still open. I'm waiting for a final confirmation from the Westchester Library System Administration before the executive board makes a decision in that early October timeframe. But in terms of the particulars of the grant, what we are seeking to do is to create a new Spanish language area. We're going to move the collection, which is on the third floor, sort of pushed away, and it's going to be placed on the second floor in a more prominent location. We'll also have tables and chairs so that people can browse the collection. The other area we're looking to improve is the teen area. We need to make some renovations to various components there. The third area is the social service space, which includes the Handelman Business Opportunity Center, also includes the BTOP Help Center, also includes a new tutoring space that we will create that, those areas will be funded as a result of this grant. Another important area that we're looking at is the local history room. The local history room, which houses our unique collection of historical material pertaining to New Rochelle, needs to be climate-controlled. This grant will allow us to do that. It will also allow us to update the spaces inside that room to make it more user-friendly. And we're also looking to upgrade the lighting on the second floor by retrofitting out all the lighting units to LED status. It will allow for a better, healthier light and will also allow us to save quite a lot of money. So, that's where we're headed. I'm hoping that I'll have more definite information at the October meeting. With that, I just want to mention that our outreach is still ongoing. Last year, we inaugurated a program in which we were sending library staff to all the meet-the-parents nights throughout the schools in New Rochelle. It was very successful last year. This year, we've done it again. I don't have statistics. I'm waiting on that. I'll share that next month. But it was very successful last year. I think we placed over 600 cards in the hands of children, which was really important. And we're looking to not just meet that number, but hopefully top it. And so, I'll have more information as we go forward. And again, that's thanks to our staff who worked lots of nights and did a lot of hopping from school to school in order to make this program viable. Just want to briefly talk about our foundation. We had a meeting, a board meeting on the 17th, last Monday. We have another meeting coming up on November 18th. It was a good foundation meeting. Particular interest was a decision made by the foundation board in which the foundation has agreed to assume the responsibilities of the partnership for the Huguenot Children's Library, assume their assets as well as any liabilities. And in exchange, the, the partnership for the Huguenot Children's Library will continue to exist in a, in a way, in the context of the foundation. Their endowment monies will go to the foundation. It will be held separately. And all of the monies that are held for, for this purpose collected, for this purpose, will continue to be used towards the improvement, enhancement, perpetuation of our great children's library. So, that was a significant decision made by the partnership board and also made by the, the foundation board.
So, I'm sorry. Have a question.
Yes.
So, just if I understand it correctly, the monies are not going to be, I guess, commingled.
They will not be commingled.
But, but there's only going to now be one organization?
There is one organization. The partnership monies will be held separately.
Okay.
But it will still be part of the, the...
So, there's no more partnership, right?
No.
Well, the only like clarification I would give is that they voted to move forward with this memorandum of understanding to sort of, actually, what's happening is that partnership is being sort of disbanded and then dissolved. And then, there's all sorts of New York state laws in terms of how this works. And then, the, the endowment piece that's, that the partnership runs today will be, now become the responsibility of the foundation and they'll have one dedicated board member on the foundation to make sure, from the existing partnership board, to make sure that the, that the foundation looks out for the interests of the Huguenot Children's Library.
But in actuality, the Huguenot Children's Library is our library.
Yes, it is.
One in the same, and any capital projects that need to happen there happen through the funding here anyway.
For the most part, the many capital projects we've done in the last 10 years have been primarily funded by our library, whether it be our, our own monies or grant money.
I think that was part of the budget.
The partnership has provided some assistance over that, that time. And certainly, they were the, they were, they were the moving organization that restored the building back to the citizens of New Rochelle when it was in a state of disrepair.
And this group ultimately will be asked to approve the new board member as we do all board members for the foundation when they, there's a, the way that I took it is there's a lot of paperwork now that needs to be completed and with the state of New York. And so, I think it'll take some time for this all to be processed, but at some point, they'll come to us and ask us to approve an additional board member. But I don't think we have, I'm not sure we have to prove anything else.
I don't think so.
I think it's sort of their business.
Exactly. But I, but it was important that both organizations had, had come together and had agreed that they would, you know, quote-unquote "merge."
How did the partnership work previous? How did the partnership work previous?
Corey, Corey asked, "How did the partnership work in, in previous years?" And Corey was actually founded approximately 25 years ago for the purpose of restoring this dilapidated historic structure to the library. As a children's library, they incorporated it as a 501(c)(3). They did a tremendous amount of sweat equity in regards to restoring the building and simultaneously, they had a series of successful fundraising campaigns that found the money to be able to restore the building, bring it back to life. Yeah. And, and since then, they, they've had endowment monies and they've had some success in terms of fundraising and, and recent years, a very generous bequest as well.
So, they're like a wind-down merger? The reason, I mean, the reason they chose to do this was their initial big mission was taking the facility and restoring it. And they've, now that that's happened and now that it's part of our responsibility as well, they, they've had trouble kind of getting momentum, et cetera, and, and, you know, just in terms of getting enough engaged board members, et cetera. And so, they, given that we run it as one library, they thought it made sense for them to combine their efforts.
And I, I think it's important to say on the record, front of the cameras, the audience, that, that the citizens of New Rochelle own a huge debt of gratitude towards the people who were involved in restoring that building. And they're leaving the scene with a beautiful, viable children's library, the only children's library in, in Westchester County, and I think one of three in the state of New York.
You know, we should, we should figure out a way to recognize them.
I agree.
And recognize what they've done. So, I haven't figured, maybe, well, special projects, but...
You don't want to give it all away.
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be a surprise.
But that's my idea, thought, which I'm sure we all agree with. So, someone needs to take that on.
I'd be willing to work with a board member, you know.
Okay. Okay.
About community relations, that sounds like community relations.
I'd love to be involved.
Oh, okay, cool.
Perfect.
Thank you.
We spend a lot of time there, so my family really appreciates it.
Do you want to be the point person?
So, you could be the point person.
Sure. I'll be the point person.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Good. So, Sarah, you reach out to me and we'll start the process and brainstorm and come up with some ideas that we'll share with the rest of the board.
Wonderful.
Exciting.
Great.
Excellent.
My report is done, but for one final piece of information, our great Friends Group continues to exist, working hard, sorting through over 1,000 donations a week, believe it or not. Our Friends President, Amy Teetz, was on a wonderful vacation for the last few weeks and all the other Friends discovered how hard Amy works. It was kind of an eye-opener. But Amy is back as of tomorrow and the Friends are continuing to sell books on three days a week, Tuesday, Thursday, Saturdays, and their next big monthly book sale is October 4th, 5th, and 6th. And the board meeting will be the following Wednesday, the 10th. And that's my report.
Thank you, Tom. We're going to go to the personnel report, I think is actually the first. Is there a personnel report?
There is. Just a few things. Need board action. I'm going to ask for a motion in a second. Our very successful summer fund on the patio program at the Huguenot Children's Library, it has ended. The young people who were working as, as assistants or counselors are no longer with us, so I'm going to ask for a motion to accept their departure. The employees in question are Campbell Afaro, who earned $11.50 per hour last day worked, August 17th. All of these employees are, final day worked is, are August 17th. Cameron Bishop, her wage was $11. Madeline Bishop, her wage was $11. Mariana Lopes, her wage, she was the, sort of the leader and did a great job, I understand. Her wage was $15. Last but not least, Isabel Morrow, her wage was $11.50. So, I'm asking for a motion to accept their departure.
I move to accept their departure.
I second.
All in favor?
We'll give that one to Corey. Aye. Aye.
Okay. One other formal action, and that is asking for a board motion to accept the resignation of one of our pages, Rosette Beckman. She, her last day was August 17th as well. She was a page here at the main library. Her wage was $11.74. And Rosette will be missed. She worked with us for over 15 years. She was a fantastic page. And she is going off to a new city and a new life as a married woman, so we wish her the best. So...
I move to accept her resignation.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Just provide an update. At yesterday's Civil Service Commission meeting, the commission voted to accept a revised job description. Our social media coordinator, Sarah Papa, as you folks know, left a number of months ago to return to Ireland. We miss her and understood her departure, but we decided to change the job description to include the duties of videographer because of our responsibilities. And the commission yesterday agreed... And the commission yesterday agreed to accept this new position. And so, we're hoping to advertise as soon as next week, available to all New Rochelle residents, posting at Civil Service and the library and on the city website. The other position that we'll be hopefully posting, if not next week, the week after, is our librarian, three head of children's services, Kathy Cronin, our longtime children's services head, retired at the end of 2017. And we are now in a position to advertise. We've reached out to the Civil Service Coordinator, and she's hoping to get a posting ready, make available to people in the city as well as other librarians in the state of New York. And that will be appearing, we hope, next week or the week after.
Thank you. Moving on to the committee reports, Budget Committee, I don't think we have a report. Budget Committee has no report. Building and grounds?
Yes. I'm happy to report that the theater HVAC was on time and on budget. So we still have a couple of punch list items, but everyone should be comfortable. We have other issues that we need to deal with as far as AC. So I think we're talking about using the same consultant to address those issues. But the grant will be closed out as soon as those punch list items are taken care of, which I'm not a technical person, but from what I understand, it seems like something manual has to happen in order for the controls to be changed. So carrier or vendor needs to come in and address that issue. And once that's done, then everything can be closed out.
Excellent. Thank you. One of the things that I actually wanted to raise is something for the Building and Grounds Committee to consider is, and Tom, you had mentioned this in previous board meetings, and I don't know if this has been shared with you, Sarah, but years ago, I think we had a consultant do like a study of the building and sort of all the critical systems and roof and things like that, and with some estimation of like lifespan. And I think it would be great if the Building and Grounds Committee could take a look at, you know, there's no, I don't think there's any particular urgency, but take a look at that and, you know, think about raising to the board things that we may need to address, you know, like significant capital expenditures that we may need to address, you know, because we'll get into, you know, in the not-too-distant future and sort of the, as we turn the page to the next year, I have to think about budgets and, you know, bonding. If there's any significant capital expenditures that we think we need to either think about this year or be thinking about in the relatively near term, it would be helpful.
Right. Actually, I should have mentioned that. That's something that Tom and I had spoken about. And he mentioned the roof was something, the additional air handlers, and then addressing the exterior of the building. So Tom and I will meet in the next couple of weeks. And then, hopefully, after that, the committee will get together and we'll have something for you.
Thank you. Very helpful. Next committee, Community Relations, Foundation, and we have to change the name. It says Huguenot Partnership.
Just Foundation.
All right. So I will reach out to Barbara to get the summer activities update. I do not know.
Can I have your mic?
Oh, am I bad? So I have the report here. So summer statistics for July and August, 435 preprograms were offered at the main library and the Huguenot Children's Library, with a total of 8,650 children, teens, and adults took part in the activities during the summer. So that's an impressive, 8,650. So kudos to the entire staff, to you, Tom, and everyone for really coordinating and really getting the word out there. And even in social media, I see the updates on a weekly, daily basis, and it's pretty impressive.
Daniel, it really is a combination special praise to children's department, who were functioning with a less than full complement. And community relations department, both together worked hard, and we had a really successful summer reading game program.
Awesome, awesome. 614 children registered for the summer reading game, 294 completed it, and 10,768 books were read. And this is only July and August. Amazing.
Isn't that great?
Teen programs, nine programs with a total of 57 participants, and a teen summer reading, seven signups and 22 books were read. Good margins for the numbers of signups. Twelve adults participated in summer reading bingo, and the prizes were funded by the New Rochelle Public Library Foundation. As far as new programs, New Rochelle will have an open mic and poetry slam. It has started already. If you haven't seen your social media, Instagram, Facebook, they have put some little pieces of it. Pretty impressive, so definitely check it out. And Tips, Tools, and Techniques for Job Search Success, monthly sessions presented by the New Rochelle Public Library job readiness coach, Rebecca Mazin. It's on the first, first one is this Saturday, so definitely check that out. So as Tom mentioned, staff members were present at the Meet Your Teacher Night over the next three weeks, signing up parents up for library cards and distribution information about librarians and services. I actually was having a conversation with Deidra and also Chris on another side about this, and really making it a, either some, kind of a campaign of some sorts, either next year or starting 2019, of really making sure that every kid in our district is issued a library card. So just really kind of figuring out how we can do that. I know that it can be probably administrative or staff issue or something, but really working out with school administrator principals, the school librarians, see how we can really cultivate that, really sending out the information and engaging families to sign up and their kids for their library cards.
Can I just say? So is that something that we should, kind of, is that something we should now say to the school board? This is something we'd like to see? And then let it kind of dribble its way down so that the admin, so you guys can figure out how that would work administratively? Is that?
I think if, great question, Deidra. And I think if we are able to obtain the approval, the consent of the Board of Education and Administration at the school district, I think we can have great success. But probably, we need that first before the principals, et cetera, will work with us.
Absolutely.
Also, it seems like we could loop in PTAs to sort of reinforce the messaging, just to sort of hop on the back end, because at least for the PTAs, very present on the first day of school, they're tabling for enrollment to sign up for the PTA. So there's forms and everything when you walk in.
Yeah.
So it just sort of seems like another step to sort of, just to kind of fill in any steps of it.
To integrate, right.
Yeah. And people who are already there on the first days of school.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, you know, it's a start, we can start having a conversation with the school board and perhaps, you know, superintendent or any administrator and see where we can go with this.
Okay.
So I'll continue on. Law at the Library, Legal and Life Matters, this Saturday, oh, they passed, sorry. No, this Saturday, right, the 22nd, 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. I'm all jacked up with my dates. I thought we had a board meeting last Thursday, so.
We both, I can't.
Election night, I was texting all over, so. I'm almost in a lull here.
And I'm going to walk out.
And in partnership with the New Rochelle Bar, this is in partnership with the New Rochelle Bar Association, Art Fest 2018 at the New Rochelle Public Libraries. Saturday, October 20th, will be the annual juried exhibit reception at the Lumen Winter Gallery. Bid Family Days, Fall Festival, Window Painting, Mass Making on October 20th. That's actually a really fun event. A lot of businesses are part of that. You'll see in around North Avenue, Main Street, orange tape on windows. So you have to sign up in advance. You call Nina at Parks and Rec, and they will sign a window for you. But walk-ins will also be accepted, so.
My Girl Scout troop is doing it for their community badge or something.
Oh, yeah? Nice.
My daughter's.
Adventure and Architect Workshop, Saturday, October 20th, at the Children's Library. The Akun Ballet perform Sleeping Beauty, October 20th, 3:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. here at the Ozzie Davis Theater. And 6:50, where Writers Read, Holiday Sunday, October 21st, 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., followed by a reception at the Ozzie Davis Theater. Also, what we, just bringing back the conversation and our doodle poll that we were, that we had out there about collaborating with the New Rochelle School District on the Undoing Racism, after lots of back and forths and really having the conversation of what dates work best, and David Peters, who is happy to work with us, with our schedule and be very flexible, the dates that we want to really solidify and that we really want to, it's right now in pencil, will be November 17th and November 18th, which will be the Undoing Racism. So...
But he will start later.
But he will start later, because that is parade day.
The 17th.
The 17th is parade day. And I believe, Tom, you and I had a conversation, that the foundation will be expecting us or inviting us for us. The Friends, right? To be part of the parade route.
I thought they were doing away with the float. I thought last year was the last year of the float. Am I wrong, or?
Well, I actually wondered the same question, Deidra.
Because I was like, that date works because we don't have a float anymore, but then...
Well, I reached out to Chris and asked her, I said, you know, are we indeed again, you know, bringing the float online? And she said, yes. I will go back to her and ask her one more time.
Well, no, it was just last year, we were like, this is the last year? Because something about they were getting rid of it. It's fine, but...
I don't think they could store it at Ward Acres Barn. I think that was the issue. Okay.
So he said he'd start later, like 10:30, 11, so, you know...
I think we should just manage with Chris and the Friends that we may have to like sort of jet early, because I think it doesn't start till, I don't know, it doesn't start...
What time does it start, do you remember?
It really doesn't kick off till usually 9:30 or 10:00.
Yeah, so I'm not sure we're really going to be able to do it. So I think, you know, we should just let them know. I mean, there was a good contingent of people from the Friends and the foundation, and I think there'll be understanding of what we're doing and appreciate, you know, understand that it's hard to find dates that work for...
This was actually the only thing.
We couldn't find something that worked for everybody. We found a date that worked for as many people as possible. And so, hopefully, that doesn't create a lot of consternation. But if you need my help, let me know.
Okay. I'm sure it'll be fine.
So I guess we just, we'll just wait on that before we kind of...
No, he thinks it's on.
Okay. All right. So we'll...
Unless we want to try to come up with another date. I just feel like it's been impossible.
But I'm open to have a discussion about it, briefly. If anybody has anything to say, share now. Okay. All right. So we'll go from there.
Just wanted to mention the ARC, the ARC Kids, the August 20th Architecture Camp, was focused on redesigning the Ruby Green, the Ruby, yeah, Ruby Green, sorry. It's been a very long day. My daughter did the camp, and I got to see all of the presentations. There was about eight groups. And the kids thought about if we could add a rock climbing wall, a ice skating rink, a pool that was open in the summer, using the store in the front to sell goggles and swimsuits. Those were, zip lines were included heavily on the rotation. They were instructed that they couldn't get rid of the Walk of Fame, that had to stay, but that they could do urban design around that. And so that's where some of it, and my daughter said, you know, we're presenting to a very important person, it was Bill Zimmerman. She's like, so, you know, we've been practicing. And so they made the pitch to the Parks Commissioner. I learned a little bit about the agreement between the county and New Rochelle on the green, which was actually very interesting. And Barbara Davis made a point to reference that they were only mandated to keep the Walk of Fame, but all of the projects had the library near the green for the kids. So that was cute. And then some of them had like solar panels on the ceiling and art. They talked about putting art on the roof of the library. And my daughter won the draw for her group. So we now have a rendering of the library and Ruby Green in my house. And the zip line.
A place of prominence.
As if you needed a reminder.
Right. So, yeah, I was laughing because I'm surrounded by beautiful models of our library property at home, and the kids presented them a little earlier. So anyways, but kudos to the project, because it was really good. And I felt like it helped tap into just this like design-creating kind of zone that I don't think my daughter otherwise would have experienced.
You know, what's so interesting was that, as you know, Deidra, they created models, and they were in our Lumen Winter Gallery, and they were really wonderful.
Yes, Friday, they were allowed to pick it up. My daughter held me to a clock to be here at 12, because that was when they could start picking it up. And we walked it home, and it's now in our playroom.
But what was amazing was that the age of the children, vis-à-vis the sophistication of the design and the models, it was impressive.
And the teachers were wonderful, really walking them through the process. So thank you so much for that opportunity.
Actually, and it was our foundation who provided the additional funding that allowed us to continue to program past the traditional close of programming, which is mid-August. So we're the go far.
Right. It was a two and a half hour, like, drop-in, you know, like drop-off.
And they were very successful.
Yeah.
So I think we'll continue to do that.
Excellent.
Can I just pile on one update?
No, I'm done.
With community relations. On the Undoing Racism training, I was speaking with the school board president. David Peters is doing this for no charge. And so, what I would suggest we do is ask David for a charity that he likes and supports, and totally optional, but any of us, obviously, and Jeffrey felt the same way about the school board members, anybody that wants to give a donation to that charity, you know, just make that available to people. And so, okay, everybody's supportive.
Will we do it as one group on behalf of the library, or will we do it as a bit of duals?
I hadn't thought about that.
I have no problem doing it as one group.
Yeah, that's a nice idea.
I wouldn't want to care, like, I think it's one group.
Yeah.
I agree.
And I think though, but no pressure, right? Everybody comfortable, like, and no suggested amount. Yeah. So, all right, so we'll, I'll talk to Jeffrey and we'll ask, you know, we'll ask the...
Could you maybe find out an approximation of what he would charge?
Yes. That's actually known, I think.
Yeah, we did it at my church, and you guys might know. I mean, it was like 100. It's...
I think it's 100, I saw something today, $165 a person, maybe? Because Heena forwarded me something where somebody else is doing the training. So we'll find, we'll verify that, so people have the information. Yeah. Okay. I think, seemed everybody was supportive. Perfect. I have a good idea, once every five years. The Finance Committee, I still chair the Finance Committee.
Yes.
Do I? So we do have an update, an exciting update. For those of you that have been with us for many years and many meetings, we are, we got, the school district approved this written agreement between the library and the school district around their obligation, frankly, to be the entity that when we need to do financings, whether they be bond financing for long-term capital expenditures or short-term financings to bridge us until we get the tax receipts in from the residents or bond anticipation notes, which you do when you're sort of under construction for a capital project until you complete the construction, that they will issue those on behalf of the library and, you know, that we document sort of the cost-sharing agreement, et cetera. Our attorney worked on it with their attorney, and it's all now been approved. And so, we're moving to, am I going to sign it?
You are tonight. I think it's on the truck.
We had already approved the agreement, I think, at a previous meeting. It's been with the, with the school district. So we're going to execute it, and we can finally not talk about that anymore.
Yeah. And they just had, they, in return, they had a couple of things they wanted Tom to work on in terms of administrative stuff that we do, which Tom was happy to do. So I'm happy to say that we're working well together.
I agree.
We are.
And the only other item for the Finance Committee, I can't remember if we meant, did we, have we done our bond, we did our bond offering?
We did, we did.
So we converted, we talked about this previously, but we had a bond anticipation note outstanding, which was a short-term debt instrument, because we were still sort of completing some of our construction projects. And once we got the final receipts in, we now have converted that bond anticipation note into a long-term debt instrument, a bond, which is what prudent financial practice. So that's completed. Next report is from the Needs Assessment Committee, which I know distributed a report to us in writing, and Corey's going to go and report to us as well.
So last we left off, we had submitted a What Makes a Library Valuable Fact Sheet, and we'll resubmit that for distribution purposes. Last week, last month, we did not. To follow up on What Makes a Library Valuable Fact Sheet, we are going, we started digging deeper on those findings. And in order to do what we have discussed, we're proposing a series of roundtable feedback sessions related to coming together as a collective way and transforming the library for the future. Our ideas are constantly evolving. We want to make sure that these sessions will be open to the general public. We'll be bringing a professional facilitator and therefore asking that people interested, please register... please register for one session only, as we are thinking we'll be having a total of four sessions. The committee is still working out the details, we're moving expeditiously to complete. The Needs Assessment Committee will be the host of the sessions and be the moderators to gather the information efficiently and effectively. We're inviting all colleagues on the trustee board to please offer any suggestions or additions of topics. But today, this is what we have. One of the sessions are a physical space to talk about the physical library and what the community wants. The second topic is living with our neighbors and serving all of New Rochelle. Third is local businesses and partnering with the library. As a point of reference, I've talked to a couple of entrepreneurs and business owners in the area, and they have a real challenge with finding employees. And I think the library should be a source of, you know, reference when they look for employees. Thanks is marketing and promotions when it comes to the library. And lastly, what are the benefits to you, the community, when it comes to the library? So the topics we currently have, we're open to suggestions for the...
Programming and usage.
Programming and usage, yes, yeah.
Programming and usage.
So we would like to have an accompanying survey for those who cannot attend the session but wanna have their voices heard as well. The options that we're looking at for the communications are Facebook, library webpage, notices with kids to their homes from the schools, churches and synagogues, and locations around the city, markets, libraries, and a drop-off box as well for the library for those people that are filling out the surveys. Our next steps are to pick a date, create an RFP for the facilitator, as well as budgeting. Request from the Budget Committee to help in an allocation of dollars for this seminar and facilitators to do the following, facilitator to do the following. We want the facilitator to design a survey, compiling all the feedback, present to the Needs Assessment Committee on the findings, and ensure that the entire community receives the feedback on the seminars and what was the majority agreement that the community wanted. This is for information purposes only, this is from the Needs Assessment Committee.
The only thing I would add is we were looking at, we were looking at January as a time to have these community sessions. What are we calling them? What do we agree on?
We talked about having a series of roundtable sessions as a, or a summit.
Didn't we have a tie, like summit?
Transformational summit.
We're somewhere between a roundtable and a summit. We'll figure out the verbiage.
Right, but January was when we were targeting to have them. And we're trying to have them over a series, like, four days, but like in a week, one week. Couple in the morning, a couple at evening to catch people at different times.
And it's urgent that we get, it's important that we get the community involved and engaged to have that voice heard during these summits.
Do you think that's, that's very helpful. Do you think timing-wise, January's a good, I'm just like thinking in my own brain, is that like a good...
Weather.
Well, weather, but like, is that, it seems like a good...
We can tell you how we came up with that.
Okay, I'm sure you guys thought of it.
Yeah, we initially tried to do November, towards Thanksgiving, then once again, December's bad, so, you know, we really...
In January, there's not really school, I guess people might be on college vacation, but there's no school vacations.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. And then towards the spring, you have, you know, elections and things like that. In order to be effective and actually get this underway before any new changes happen, we're trying to push this, to have it presented prior to the elections and things that happen in April and May.
Wonderful.
There you go.
Thank you for the committee report. Personnel Committee.
That's personnel. So Personnel Committee is Dan, Dan, Daniel, Daniel, Deirdre, and myself. So last we talked, we were working on the Director's Evaluation, and actually, we have finished the document, and it is in everybody's folder. So here is the timeline. We are asking, if you look in your folder, you'll find it, we are asking everybody, all the board members, to bring, to supply their feedback to us by October fifth. And then, at that point, the committee will spend time evaluating, or kind of putting together the results, and also reaching out to do, to staff, to direct reports, direct reports. And so then in November, an executive session after, the Personnel Committee, and perhaps Chuck has had time to talk to Tom, we will present something back to you in November in executive session. And I have your, your copy here.
Okay, thank you.
So October fifth is the date for everybody to return it. We will spend October kind of tabulating, putting stuff together, talking to Tom, and then we will report back in executive session in November. Any questions?
How shall we return this to you, given that it's a hard copy?
Yep, any way you want. You can send it to me, I am happy to pick it up from you guys. You can leave it in a folder, and you can leave it here in an envelope, and I'll pick it up.
Drop it to your house?
You can drop it to my house. It's also Deirdre and Daniel, so if they're closer to you, if you live closer to any, to any three of us. How does that sound? Any questions? Tom, do you have any questions?
No, nope, sounds good.
Thank you. And I would just add that this is part of, part of normal process, this is what we're supposed to do as a board, so it's not, we're a little overdue, we haven't done it in a while, so we'll go through the process. Policy Committee, are there any? No, no, okay. Nothing from the Policy Committee. Special Committee.
Special Projects? That's us, right?
Yeah.
Special Projects Committee.
Do you wanna talk about the public, did you already talk about the public art?
I didn't, I thought you might want.
Yeah, well, you know more about it to date than I do, but please talk about next steps.
Okay. In terms of special projects, we were approached through the good works of Chris Sellen with a local resident, a family that has lived in New Rochelle for many, many years, who are noted art collectors. And apparently, the family is thinking about liquidating some of its art. They may be moving from their home, they're an elderly couple, and they have approached us about the possibility of receiving two really significant pieces of sculpture, public art, and we're very excited about it. Chris Sellen and I have met the family in question, and they were extremely interesting, dynamic. We thought the sculpture could fit very well in the context of our commitment to public art that we have throughout the building and on the building and outside the building. And so our next steps are, one in which Whitney and I will be journeying back to our potential donor's home, looking, looking at the sculpture in question, going over the policy that we have for, for, for the library accepting significant gifts of this nature, and then quite possibly adjourn back to the library to talk with the family representative to look at potential places where the art might work, might fit. So we're excited about that. We're trying to find a date that works for all of our busy calendars, and hopefully we'll achieve something in the next few weeks.
The only thing I would add is that we should think about, as an institution ourselves, if the family has any instruction for what happens, if we ourselves need to divest of the, what do you do afterwards? I mean, it's obviously, we hope to have it in perpetuity, but should something happen? And we should just think about kind of a legacy of the public art and what they wish to see after it's with us, if there is an after. But you should, we have to think about that kind of thing. And there's a number of other items like that, that I'm gathering from my former colleague at the Lincoln Center, where I was working with her on a lot of donated, very, very valuable sculptures mostly, and some paintings where no one knew much about them, they weren't sure what to do with them because with the renovation would come, you know, new locations and new places. And so they, so it's just, I'm just kind of gathering questions to make sure that we're really thorough about how we're accepting these really wonderful pieces.
Great, we do have a policy, and it's exciting, but we have to continue to follow the process as appropriate. And I appreciate, Whitney, you're bringing into play some people who have more expertise than we typically do.
I have a question, Whitney. How do they require that asset on their balance sheet?
I will find out. I don't know how, I don't know how Lincoln Center did it, but, well, some of it was so, donated so long ago in the sixties, when, when, you know, people wanted, you know, a certain area named after them, and they would contribute something, and I'll have to find out.
Because I assume that appreciates, like, whatever...
Right.
It's gonna appreciate over time.
That's right. And what are the rules around, like, could we ever sell it to raise money? Could we, you know...
Or even use it as collateral to raise money?
Exactly.
As the asset, yeah.
Exactly, right.
Certainly, we dealt with that issue many, many years earlier in relation to the Norman Rockwell painting and Land of Enchantment. So I think all your points are really good, and we should prepare ourselves for whatever the future may hold.
And we just wanna make sure that while they're here and alive, that we can ask them questions, and, you know, that, you know, we don't have to guess, because I think that's a lot of the struggle that ends up happening.
Yeah. I think that's, I think it's an awesome opportunity, I think, thank you for doing that, because to your point, it's best to go into it with everybody...
Feeling really good.
...aligned in terms of the interests and knows what the eventualities could be if different things happen. I did wanna mention one, Deirdre just reminded me, one other thing, I don't know if some of you saw it, but maybe two, three weeks ago?
I don't know.
A month ago? I don't know, the CBS Sunday Morning program had a piece, you know, a segment on a gentleman who's an artist, and I'm gonna forget his name, who has sort of like done some art pieces that are sort of like modern-day Rockwell-ish with a much more diverse element to them.
I've seen one of them, one of them is the, one of the, he kind of did, during the election cycle, I think there was a picture of a woman, which was very, everybody saw it, she was Muslim, and everybody saw it, and that's one of the, one of the shots, or one of the paintings he painted, one of the paintings he did, but it's all of those. And it's kind of an updated version of the Rockwell, This Is America.
Yeah, very cool.
Yeah.
And so, you know, I saw that, and I called up Deirdre, and I was like, this is, there's so many things that are like parallels to our community. We have this Rockwell tie, we're a very diverse community, we've changed a lot since the time of Rockwell, we're proud of the Rockwell heritage, but we're a different place and a different community. So it just, I don't know what the right answer is, but there's like a lot of parallels. And there's a, there's a traveling exhibition right now of this artist's pieces. So I was like, what if we could ever get this, like, to the library, right, with our Rockwell, you know, on the wall? And so...
This is why you're president.
And so Deirdre reached out to Teresa Comp Leghorn on the New Rochelle Council for the Arts, and we're trying to think about figuring out, and my husband Jonathan is on the Fund for Educational Excellence, and we're, you know, hopefully we can start thinking about ways to position this in a way, as we think about an idea, and we can bring it back to this group, how we figure out, in an ideal world, we find somebody in the New Rochelle community who has an in to make the ask to this gentleman to try to woo them to come here and do this. So, you know, a lot of wood to chop between now and then, but seems pretty interesting.
But the exhibit is traveling till like 2020, so we have time.
Is there, do they have like a representative, like an agent, or...
I'm sure they do. I'll send around the...
I might, yeah, I might, yeah, I...
Yes, somebody will have it. Right, yeah. So I'll send around the segment from CBS Sunday Morning, and, you know...
Teresa's on it too.
Good, yeah.
And she's pretty well, this is her thing, like museum and arts. I think, I'm hopeful that, you know, between all of us, we can figure out how to get it here, and in the right way, you know, whether it should be at the library, or maybe at the museum, at the high school. There's so many opportunities here in New Rochelle, so...
And maybe the artist's coming to do like a talk.
Talk, yeah, it would be great. So, just in, it's in like idea form, but if you guys have more ideas...
Welcome.
Welcome, but, and I'm sitting down with Teresa and Jonathan at some point, and anybody's welcome to join us.
Very cool.
I had the idea, so I'll stay away.
No, you have your idea.
I'll let you deal with Jonathan, I don't wanna get too involved. I see him enough.
Not enough.
He's recording.
He doesn't typically watch.
Except for this one.
He doesn't wanna get too involved at the library.
Let's go over to the...
Somebody to take the walk.
The public session. That I read. Are there any other items before we go to the public discussion? Okay. Dorothy Oliver. Okay, pass. Monique Evelard. Okay, thank you. Dan Miller. You look different, Dan Miller.
Tell me how.
There's, there's some facial hair missing.
Everybody, if I just use a mic.
Yeah, and they'll tell you.
I think the one on the, there's one on the podium.
November, November is no shave November.
Really?
Yeah.
Is it really?
We had a cancer month, so it's no shave November.
Most people lately have been looking at saying, nice haircut, or, so I'm impressed. Thank you. So I haven't been here for a while, and I got to watch the video of, I guess, the last, the last presentation and, from the Needs Committee. And Cory, I was, I was really taken with, guys, how you've kind of thought about this and looked at it, and pleased. And so my comments are brief. I think the ideas of getting to the community in the ways you're talking about make a lot of sense. And, you know, I think our experience has been that when doing things like roundtables and this kind of outreach, it's a real challenge to do it in ways that allow people who are not the same people to get around the table. And I wish I had some great magic to say, you know, do this and it'll happen. But, you know, with, with the stresses of people's lives and trying to earn an income and getting out, it's a really hard thing to do. And so I think it, you know, it deserves some real looking, which I'm sure you'll do. Likewise, I'm just struck, you know, as you guys hire a facilitator, probably last year I would have gotten up here to please make the point that the facilitator have nothing to do with RXR. I think we've all moved beyond that now. I know in, in my work, I think most of you know I'm a physician in the community health center movement and, and some academics, and one of the things we find in my work is that how we frame questions greatly affects how people respond, you know, with all good intentions, that, you know, if I offer you something that's gonna reduce your risk by fifty percent, we all jump at it until we find out that the original risk was, you know, one percent, and there's huge side effects, and, you know, you know what I'm going. So, you know, I'm hoping that there's a way, when the facilitator comes up with a questionnaire, that maybe, you know, there can be some wide eyes at, at what questions get asked. You know, if we ask everybody, would you like a brand-new, wonderful thing where everything's great, everybody's of course gonna say, sure. So, you know, just in that process, I think I'm appreciative of how you've involved us all in the process. I know a lot of us would, would love to stay involved in some way to, to bring some other perspectives to that questionnaire.
I think, so I've done this before, well, I've participated in something like this before, and, you know, what the facilitator did at that point, and they were from the UK, and it's actually someone I had put up for, to come in for this one as well, but Whitney has a lot of facilitators that she can go to. But the point being, during that summit, you have to be very clear on what the upside is and the downside is, right? So if you get this, that means this happens. So you can't do it in a vacuum of, oh, do you just want this? You have to be clear about what the downside is, and if there is a downside, you have to have buy-in on the downside before anyone could say, yes, we want this shiny new thing. And sometimes in the summit that I was in, they opted to say, we don't want extra policing because we don't want additional taxes.
Right.
And that was a hard decision for them to make, but that's the community's position to make that decision. And they live with that. And that's, you know, usually what you're looking for in a facilitator, to express, here's the upside and here's the downside. So, yeah. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Can we have my representative? Take this one. Thank you. I would also add, and I think what you're saying is that you want to be careful about leading questions, and you want to be careful about, you know, questions that will, you know, arrive at an, at an answer that some people cringe at, and frankly, I think, you know, we're really looking at this, we, we kind of mapped out a series of topics because, because they're broad, and we don't want them to be, you know, pie in the sky broad, but we want them to be within, you know, with enough room where people can come up with ideas that we have, none of us may have thought of, and also experiences that maybe we haven't had, and aren't applying to this circumstance, and, you know, I think what Corey's referring to is an experience with community, community work, and what I'm involved with now at my work in Jamaica, Queens, where there's a lot of change happening, everything that is happening is really being driven by the community, and what the feedback we're getting is from the people within the community, which is unique, I find, when, when a place is changing, is that things, things are good, that things are changing, they're good, and it's coming from within, and I think people are taking ownership of it, and feel like this is not being imposed upon them, and, and that it's really something that is a shared, it's kind of a shared objective that everybody is creating together, and I think that's our goal. So, hopefully, that answers some of your concerns.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it does, and, you know, just to, to the point, Whitney, you know, again, I think when, whenever we offer people something new, or, you know, we all have a tendency to want the new thing, and I think, you know, many of us who have been here for a long time have, have struggled with this, of, of what's the benefit of the new thing versus the downside of the new thing, and, and keeping the wonderful thing that we have, and not jeopardizing it. So, so it's all about that process of choosing those questions, and, you know, and make, and I know, I know you know what I'm saying.
I think the other thing, I don't know if you saw on the tape, you know, the study that we did, we, what we came to the conclusion was, is that you have to figure out how to make this library better, because it increases the assets around, and not get rid of this library, it's actually, how do you make this library better? Because all the development that's happening in the community, the library is the one that's going to drive the value of those assets around here. So, the conclusion we have from research is that the library is a focal point that actually increases the value of the community.
Right.
And we want to stay on that path.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Marjorie Sacks?
Keep that ready.
So, I'm going to just echo a little bit about what Dan was saying. I really appreciated, I wasn't able to be at the last meeting, I really appreciated your presentation, and I was particularly happy to see something that we've been saying all along, which is, I particularly appreciated what we've been saying all along, that this, this library is, on this property is a standalone building, is, is what's most valuable to the library, to the patrons, and to the whole community. So, again, similar to what Dan was saying, with these groups that you're talking about, you're probably only going to get a small amount of people coming to these groups, and I would just suggest that you take that as just one piece of a larger needs assessment that you're doing, that it's not the people who are in these groups that are going to make, call, call the shots. That that's really important, because I've been to so many things, and a lot of the developers have been doing these roundtable things, and they just haven't worked. It's the same people who come, and they make the same suggestions, and it just is not, it's not transparent, it's not, it's, it's manipulative, actually, and I really, you know, don't want that to happen here, so...
What I think, when, before I was elected on, there was a lot, a big voice about save our library, and there were, I don't remember the, anyone remember the final count of the petition on save our library? All those voices need to be heard now.
Yes.
Because they actually took the time to sign up, and also made comments, which were great, and so, those are people that wanted to have their voices heard, and I think it was at least 600 something like people that signed.
743.
Seven hundred and fifty.
Somebody just did it a little while ago.
Right, so...
And then, we also have a written petition that people have signed that has a few hundred, so we have over a thousand.
And all those numbers, all those people, we'd love to have them all engaged. Right, that's the, that should be our foundation.
And more.
And more.
But I would hate to see all those people who took the time to sign that not be engaged now.
Right.
So, that's important, not so much that, the, let's make sure that the energy then is, is real, and that they are, we're given the opportunity, okay, we're opening this up, I want to see you now, not just then. I'm, I'm so happy that you're, you're making yourself vocal, so let's keep it doing. And we're going to try to make these in different parts of the city, at different hours, we're going to try our best to make it, to make it...
Inclusionary.
We're going to try our best, because I know that is, that's a, that's a hard, hard thing.
It's really hard.
I know.
I don't know, I actually don't know anybody who's been successful in doing this, and which is also why I think it needs to be put in the context of, it's just one piece of information, as you do, you know, a big, a big needs assessment, because you're, you're just not going to know who you are really getting represented. And I think as you start talking about the petition, you just saw the outpouring of love for this library, and, and the, you know, the, just very powerful to read all of those signatures and the comments, so, and I don't know how you reach them, because, you know, it's the first name with a last initial, and you're not going to know a lot, I'm sorry, I'm not speaking to everyone, but I, so...
I think ultimately, we all just hope that we, you guys, to sort of help get the word out as well, right, and sort of encouraging attendance, certainly everybody using their networks and all of our representatives coming to meetings can help us sort of force multiply a little bit in getting the word out. I love that you guys are kind of just date time and any kind of various...
We're trying.
It's always something, I feel like, you know, that gets missed, and so, we can never count it, it's on Saturday morning, and on that kind of your Saturday out, but I'm just saying, like, might be more willing, you're equal, not willing, but more equal to come. And we all kind of work together, and we might be able to reach that, right?
Right, but again, I mean, there's so many more people in New Rochelle, and these are people who, most of people had access to a computer, and, I mean, let's, let's be real, you know, there's a lot of disenfranchised people in New Rochelle, and a lot of them come to the library, but don't necessarily feel comfortable making their voices heard. And I think we just have to acknowledge that, and know that you're going to get a certain number of people, hopefully representative of different communities, but you're really not going to be able to fully reach the people who come here, the thousands of people.
What we looked at was, I'll just use as an example, Deidre has a pretty strong network, and so, usually, in any community business environment, there are certain key people that reach a lot of people, and so, what we're trying to do is find those key people that have strong tentacles. There's usually, you know, 10, 15 people that constantly reach out, you know, to different folks. I've named someone who moved out, but was in the community strong, Lori Hall, right, Lori Hall Armstrong, and I knew she could reach a lot of people because she networks and she is in the community a lot. So, we're looking to identify those key people who are in the community, may not be an elected official or anything like that, but, you know, that they are, you know, one of the people that galvanize the community in their specific area, and whether it's disenfranchised or the north end, there is someone, you know, in any of the affordable housing area, there's a key person there. We don't know who it is, but there is a key person there that galvanizes that community.
Nigellette.
Right, right. But see, we know you, that's why, right? So, that's the goal, on how we turn to as many people as possible, and that's really the goal.
Okay. And I just, my last thing is that I really, I feel very inspired that you were going to be doing the Undoing Racism training, it's a very powerful training, and I think it's, I really appreciate that the effort's been put out to do this, that you're, you're finding a date, and I think, I think it's fabulous, so, thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other items of business? Okay, actually, just one reminder, collection for Jean's flowers, Jean had surgery, she's doing fine, plan, and Tom kindly arranged to send her flowers. And with that, I will make a motion to adjourn.
You can hit the bell.
I need a second.
A little second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.